Could I have a motion, please, to adjourn private session?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meaning adjourned. I'd like to call the order, the July 18th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 5th, 2016, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Could you please stand and sweep the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic, the equal citizens, one nation, under God, in this law of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, page 51. Could I have a motion that the Board approve the minutes of the agenda meeting held on June 20th, 2016?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Seletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. De Sensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downey?
I have to abstain, we had our school graduation that night. Could I have a motion that the Board approve the minutes of the private session number one, held on June 20th?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Seletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. De Sensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downey?
Yes. Could I have a motion that the Board approve the minutes of the private session number two, held on June 20th?
I just wanted to point out before we do that, Ms. Downey, as I mentioned, this is slightly revised from what the Board read. Per Mr. Stein, we changed the phrase where it said, "Mr. Wigley was invited into private session to entered private session," other than that.
With consent.
With consent of the representative of the employee.
Could I have a motion with those amendments?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Seletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. De Sensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downey?
Abstain. And lastly, could I have a motion that the Board approve the amendment?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. De Sensa, do you have?
Yes, on page 32, I have a correction on the donations. My donation is for the Senior Prom, not Senior Field Day.
With that revision, the motion and second is stands. Mr. Seletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. De Sensa?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Downey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stein, do you have anything?
Not right now.
Okay. Well, I'd like to welcome Mr. Wigley for your first meeting. You've been here, what did you say, nine days?
Number nine.
Number nine. You've been doing a lot of work, so I'd like to turn the meeting over to you.
Yes, thank you. President Downey, thank you, Board. It's been a pleasure, the first nine days. To write a book in the first nine days, we agreed the title, "I Landed in Lacy." It's been wonderful so far. Had an opportunity to visit some of the schools, meet some of our extended school year students, and some of our staff that's working, it's been exciting. I was able to reach out to the principals that are in-house the past week and get some information regarding what's going on in the buildings. I just want to share a little bit of that with you. When I'm finished, I'm going to do our second period marking of the HIB report for the state. But I did want to just let you know that kindergarten registration, you know, we're still pushing to have that as many of these youngsters enrolled by August 31st when the deadline ends. And there's a slide online, there's registration. I think it's wonderful to have the opportunity to do the registration online still, so that is a push forward. Touch with Mr. Brewer at Lenoka Harbor, I see a big refurbishment of the library is going through well, and we look at all of our buildings and thousands and thousands of square feet of floor are being stripped and waxed. With our custodians working hard, not just on the floors, but the walls, the cabinets, and that summer overhaul that goes on in every school across the state. It looks like we're doing outstanding job prepping for next year at this point. New student registration continues and transition of materials to the next grade, which is a big process and a lot of demanding work through our main offices and counseling. Master schedules are continually built, class assignments, the purchasing of replacement equipment imperishables that the buildings need to operate per their budgets is occurring. On the curricular side, we are preparing for the delivery of Envision 2.0 math for K-5, as well as the ReniGen E.L.A. program. Everyone's excited to be moving into K-5. So those materials are being processed and will be distributed to the various homerooms, classrooms, and special ed rooms. So one of the things I wanted to definitely promote, it's pushed on to me from principals as a reminder, is the summer reading, the opportunity for our students to enhance their reading, and the opportunities online and the recommended texts. So there is a link on a slide on the website that has some really interesting, great books for our young students to read at all ages over the summer. Middle school, Mr. King, did remind me that there is a Study Island Contest, being sponsored by the help of the PTC, with a letter that he's going to be sending home with regard to that. Again, custodians are, I've been in the buildings, they look like bombs went off right now. There's just stuff all over the place, there's just desks everywhere, buckets and everything, and they're doing a great job getting those floors ready because they're going to get beat up very soon. It's important. At the high school, our new principal, Mr. Brandis, is still getting acclimated to the staff that's in and out a little bit through the summer administration. So he's been establishing some committees, he's reached out to his staff, he's looking at improving some school climate and some student achievement initiatives, and he's busy doing that. He's had a very busy start himself. He's met with the student government president to talk about a job fair to establish in March, which would really enhance students' employment for summer employment and get them early before the jobs are gone. And he's also scheduled a Scholars for Dollars Night in November, which I, for one, would love to take my junior to as he's applying for aid and scholarships, just helps cover the need and understanding of finances above and beyond high school. That's secondary funding, where the grants are, where the money is, how to apply for scholarships. And once again, the tech department's doing a great job processing warranties and insurance claim process for the Pro Book and the One-One Initiative, and they are also preparing to distribute those. There's a lot of work going on. The good news, the most exciting part I find is, are the multiple handicap program had been raising ducks over the summer, I actually got to see them over there here in the courtyard in the high school, and they brought a group of students over from the E.S.Y. program and showed, had them released to the wild, so they got to see nature in action at its best. So I think that was a great, great learning opportunity for them. Overall, I'm excited to be here, there's so much to do in Acclimate. I am thankful for the transitioning thus far. I still do plan to get out to each of the schools, meet with the parent groups, and be visible, necessarily in the buildings, but also in the community as much as I possibly can. So that's all on my personal agenda to make sure that I'm connecting to Lacy as I will Lacy connect to me. Ending that part of this, I just want to make sure, I know that our schools, you know, they are a safe place, and our families and the community are welcome there, but we talk about those things, we talk about reporting to the state for violence and vandalism and harassment intimidation and bullying is what we're required to do. So at this point, we already have a second reporting period, it's a six-month period. I'm going to ask that Dr. Clark present the data for the past six months for our harassment intimidation and bullying statistics.
Thank you, Mr. Wigley. So as Mr. Wigley mentioned, the State Department of Education, the New Jersey Department of Education, requires school districts to provide a semi-annual report to the Board of Education at a public meeting, the number of incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, we know it as HIB, for all six of our schools. The data that I am presenting tonight is for the second reporting period from January 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2016. I've already reported back in January, the first half of the year, so this is the second half. And what I'm going to do is compare the data for this period as compared to the same time period last year, and it'll make a little more sense when I explain. So again, these are incidents of harassment intimidation and bullying. So for Cedar Creek, for this reporting period, there were three investigations, two of those were confirmed. As compared to last year, that number was zero, so we're slightly higher at Cedar Creek. Forkett River, the incidences were zero, so obviously the confirmed is zero, and that's exactly as it was last year, so there's no change there. For Lenoka Harbor School, this reporting period is zero, this time last year was zero as well, so there's no change. For the Milpon School, this reporting period, the number of investigations was three, and all three of those were confirmed. Compared to last year, it was two investigations, two of those confirmed, so slight increase there. At the middle school, seven investigations, three of those were confirmed. Compared to last year, there was one investigation, one of those was confirmed, so a little bit of an increase there. At the high school, total of five investigations, three of those are confirmed, and the way that compares to last year, there were 10 investigations, three confirmed, so there we have a decrease. So overall, there were a total of 18 investigations for all six of our schools, 18 investigations, 11 confirmed. This time last year, 13 investigations, six confirmed. So we are slightly higher. But even though the data indicates a slight increase in the number of HIB incidents, the schools, through the collaborative efforts of the school safety teams and the anti-bullying specialists, continue to focus on ways to improve climate and culture, which is really important, and it's a big focus of our principals, of our district supervisors, of our supervisors, our system principals, and that's what I mean when I say collaborative, and it has to be collaborative. So to that end, our goal is to improve our HIB programs, our approaches, our initiatives, to ensure that they continue to be targeted and meaningful, and I have no doubt that we will continue to do that throughout the school years. We continue to offer programs that address character education, that address harassment intimidation and bullying, and I expect that these numbers will decrease when I report this time next year. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Wigley, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. I would just echo that, that one case confirmed is too many, I made that statement before, that to really squash that out takes an effort, school, community, the families coming together. I think Lacy is definitely on the right track to accomplish you that. At this time, I'd like to introduce a guest with us tonight. Her name is Lisa Gorap, she's from Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer. She is going to speak to us in regards to refunding of our 2009 issued bond debt. Thank you.
This evening, the Board has a resolution in front of them to consider regarding the refunding of the Board's 2009 debt that was issued pursuant to a referendum. Just going to give you a little background. When the Board issued the debt in 2009, the rates were low, and the 2009 bonds maturing in 2020, 2030 are callable, meaning you can prepay them. Those bonds are currently at about 4% interest. If you were to sell bonds exactly the same right now, those bonds would sell for about 2.2%. So that delta, that difference of what your bonds are at now, and what the market is at now, is what gives rise to you, the opportunity to refinance these bonds. It's not unlike refinancing a mortgage, there's some slight differences, but that's really what you're doing, you're reducing your mortgage payments, the interest portion of your mortgage payments. The state requires that Boards of Education that meet a certain benchmark need to refund their bonds. That benchmark is 3% present value savings. Today's market, your bonds achieve over 4% present value savings, so you're in the zone where the state would like you to consider refunding your bonds. Why does the state get involved? Because the state gives you aid on bonds. So as you save, they save. The savings that was anticipated at today's interest rates, the budgetary savings is about $570,000 in debt service. That is net of all costs, that's pure budgetary savings to the Board over that time period for the bonds. Those savings are net and achieved, and you might ask me, well, what if the market moves away between now and the time we can execute this refunding? Then the refunding doesn't occur. And what has the Board lost by reserving its opportunity to undertake this refunding? Probably about $500 in terms of a publication cost, there's a financial statement that's required to be prepared by the township. So it is an opportunity to get your bonds at the current market rate interest and save the district and the taxpayers some tax dollars.
And that 500, 570,000 is over a period of how many years?
14 years.
14 years. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can you stay for when we do the public portion, because I know we have a question. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. So that leads us now into public session. If anyone has any questions, why don't we start with you? Because I know you have a question.
Sure, pleasure, pleasure.
Mr. Biafo.
Dominic Biafo, Forkett River. The 2.2%.
I can't carry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The 2.2% that you say, is that consistent with the down rating we received a couple of years ago from S&amp;P?
Well, we would need to do a new rating, and yes, we would assume the rating that was received on the bonds last time. The financial advisors have also preserved the opportunity to get bond insurance and the triple A rating, and only if that is cost effective do they do that.
Was that cost included in the estimate that we put together? Okay. And is the state contribution consistent with what we have now, that they promised 40%, but they're only providing 34%?
The state is still funding debt servicing and grants at 85% of what they're supposed to be giving you, which does translate to about 34.4%. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? This is the public session, so if any other questions to... Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, and thank you so much for coming and explaining for us. We'll open up to board comments. Mrs. De Sensa will start, down your end.
Okay.
Thank you. Good night.
Well, it's been a busy 18 months on this Board, and we have lots more work ahead. Welcome to Superintendent Wigley, who is participating in his first monthly business meeting tonight. We look forward to your innovations and anticipated excellent results. We also welcome our new high school principal, Mr. Brandis, and we anticipate great things. On Tuesday, June 28th, I attended the Governor's Town Hall Forum in Wall about changing the school funding formula, and on Wednesday, I'll be in Trenton attending a meeting sponsored by Senator Sweeney about the school funding reform proposal, and it remains to be seen if there ever will be a fair funding formula from the state of New Jersey, but we will follow this closely. Just a reminder that Monday, July 25th, is the last day to submit petitions for the school board. The New Jersey School Board Association has a downloadable candidate kit on www.njsba.org, and the Ocean County Clerk in Tom Server has the petition forms. Be a crucial part of our children's education, join our Board's efforts working for their benefit. Remember, the better education our students receive, the better our future and our world. Everyone's help is needed with an issue that I recently noticed, it's the need to care for district facilities. I attended an event in the high school gym, and I noticed something that disturbed me and should disturb you too, and was the amount of gum that I saw stuck on the new gym floor. Our custodial staff has more than enough work to do without having to scrape off discarded gum. Besides being unhygienic, it is another expense, and that money should be spent on education, not cleaning. While we aren't preparing for Better Homes and Gardens interview, our premises should always look its best inside and out. Thank you in advance. To better understand a large cost on our budget, I want to highlight one item of it, it's a big ticket item, the benefits cost. In the month of May, our district paid $1,086,935. The employee contribution was $249,538. These two figures have to be added together, and the total cost for benefits for the month of May 2016 was $1,336,473. In June, the benefits cost for the district was $1,116,124. The employee contribution was $211,650, bringing the total cost for benefits for the month of June as $1,327,774. So what of this is? The employee contribution is currently less than 25%. The employee benefit cost is a very significant expense. It points out the need to address this budget item. This budget item affects all school districts throughout the state. Our governor, elected officials, and concerned citizens groups are now focusing on a solution. Unfortunately, until this is resolved, our taxpayers bear the bulk of this expense. And yes, even those who rent pay, it becomes a part of your monthly rent. If anyone in the community ever has any questions about any item in the district budget, please feel free at any time to contact the district office, (971) 2000, and follow the prompts. And thank you to all who are in attendance here tonight, your presence is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Is this, are you, Ms. McAvoy?
Hi.
I couldn't see who was sitting there.
Good evening. I have a spotlight on recent graduates. Luke Vincentini graduated in 2014. He attended OCC for two years. He also got certified as an EMT, and he's working here in Lacy as an EMT. He also is working at Carlos's Bakery in Jersey City as a decorator. Luke also has his own pastry business in town, Luke's Pastries and Cakes, if anyone's interested. We're very proud of Luke. Recently, I was able to attend a trip to Europe that the school sponsored. We went to Austria, Germany, and Spain, and Mr. Edens and Mr. Groland did an awesome job, and I highly recommend it. I think 23 students and 15 adults went. So it was a wonderful trip, and it was a great experience. And welcome, Mr. Wigley, and that's all for tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Downey.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. Mr. Claus.
Welcome, Craig. Looking forward to working with you, thank you. That's all I got.
I think we have Mr. Carney spoken. Okay. Mr. Giordano, you're next.
Oh, sure. Save some airtime with Mr. Claus. I just want to say that I hope our staff and our students are enjoying the summer vacation. I'll second what Superintendent Wigley said, that, you know, our custodial staff is working hard to get the buildings ready for September, they do a great job for us, and we'll welcome Mr. Wigley in your role, and looking forward to working with you, as well as Mr. Brandice in the high school. Welcome, and I'll keep it brief tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seletti?
I'll keep it just as brief. I just hope everybody's enjoying their summer, staying safe and cool. I wanted to welcome Mr. Wigley, and we look forward to working with him. And also, I want to get ahead of myself, but I want to welcome and congratulate Mr. Saboko on his new appointment, and... That's all I have. Thank you.
Vice President Bidwell?
Yep, I'll keep it brief as well. I'm going to talk a little bit about Craig Wigley. I've had the opportunity to work with him here for the past nine days, and probably met with him at least three of those days, and what I've found that should be comforting to all of you as it is for me, is that already he's keeping some of his, what I'll call campaign promises, some of the things that in his interview process really hit home for me and the rest of the Board. He's already got a jumpstart on, things I'm looking forward to. I won't list them here, so I'm sure he's going to want to share them with you as they roll out, but I think all of us are very excited about what he's going to bring to this district, and are ready to support him and give him our best efforts. Other than that, stay safe and stay cool.
Thank you, Mr. Bidwell. And I just want to just backtrack, since I wasn't here on the June 20th meeting, we had graduation at the district I work in, but I wanted to congratulate all the graduates, both graduations, both the high school and the middle school graduation were so pleasant, and the students were just so, I think, the most well-behaved graduations I've seen in all the time I've been sitting through graduations. So congratulations to all of them, good luck, and everyone just be safe this summer. Remember, kids are everywhere, so be careful when you're driving. Mr. Wigley, it's been a real pleasure working with you. He's laughing. It really has. The whole district is kind of just like, phew, since you've been here, so thank you. And, you know, we have a new high school principal, a lot of new coming up this year, a lot of newness. So congratulations, and looking forward to working with you the next three years or longer. So thank you. Okay, so at that, we'll move on to new business. Page 53, could I have a motion for items A through V? V as in Victor? V as in Victor. Thank you. And, um... Yes, V as in Victor. Could I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Seletti?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mrs. De Sensa?
Yes, on all, but I have exceptions on item A for items 260527 and item 953013, and on item C, yes, on all, except item 7. No on item F, and all the rest are yes.
Did you say no on F, like in Frank?
F in Frank, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell?
Yes, on all with the exception of C and D.
Mrs. Downey?
Yes. Two donations. Please bear with me, I want to acknowledge all the donations, it's very important because these people have donated so much to our district. At Cedar Creek School, we have the PTA donated $480, and to the class of 2016, there was a donation of $264 from Cedar Creek. Southern Ocean Pediatrics, donation of $1,000. Wells Fargo Community Campaign, $300. And Mr. and Mrs. Chris Donahue donated a photo booth for the fourth grade party at $150. At Lenoka Harbor, we have Precious Journey Preschool donated $250 towards miscellaneous playground equipment. At the middle school, the donation is from Mandorla Incorporated, sponsor of Precious Journey Preschool, they donated six station listening centers with library books for worth of $800. Also, Kim Seidern, I hope I pronounced it correctly, small glass display cases, two of them were $100. At the high school, we have donations for the Lacy Township High School Fishing Derby. We have Kearney Bank donated $100, The German Butcher donated $40, Warp Side Chiropractic donated $25, Thompson Healthcare and Sports Medicine donated $100. Wawa in Lenoka Harbor, $25, Griz Bait and Tackle, $45, Viannapoli, $25, Shore Security Solutions, $50, Forkett River Rotary Foundation, $150, the Lacy Municipal Alliance, $500. Cito in Waretown donated $200. Applebee's donated $25, The Fish Hawks donated a check for $100. ShopRite in Waretown, $25 gift card. Exelon Corporation, $300. Dunkin' Donuts and Creekside Outfitters, both $25 gift cards. Walmart in Lacy, gift card for $50. Target from Tom Server, gift card for $50. The Lacy Elks donated a check for the freshman class at $250. And for the district, we have Giordano, Halloran, and Cisla donated keyboards and mice for the technology department for approximately $450. approximately $450. So on behalf of the entire district, thank you for your donations. Could I have a motion, please, to accept the donations?
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Seletti, yes. Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa.
Yes, and thank you all very much.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Item three, we have a correction. This is under Programs and Curriculum, under A, I'm sorry, not, no, I'm sorry, this was the corrections in the next part, okay. Could I have a motion then for item three, A?
Move it.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Seletti.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes. Under four certificated personnel, we have a correction on A. Under the name Susan Kish, it should say retirement, not resignation, retirement. So could I have a motion for items A through J with that correction? Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Seletti.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSensa.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Is there any additions to the agenda? None? Okay, seeing none, could we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, meaning adjourn.